Good evening and welcome to the October 7th meeting of the Richmond Common Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for a prayer by Councilman Goss.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance to do what's best for our community. We ask you to look over our citizens and our employees, and we ask that you bless them. In your name we pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor. Gary Turner. Jane Bumblelow.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor has an excused absence tonight. You've received minutes from the September 16th meeting of our common council. Any concerns, questions, or corrections?
If there's no corrections, I make a motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the minutes from our September 16th, 2024 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have no presentations tonight, and Mayor Oler has informed me that he really has no communications this evening, but I'll open the floor for questions if anyone has questions.
Mr. President.
We'll say if I may, Mr. President, at our next meeting, I'll bring up all the times for all the trick-or-treat events that the city's hosting. Of course, the city-wide trick-or-treat is 6:00 to 8:00 on the 31st, but there's a bunch more at Parks and Police, and since they all follow that meeting, I'll just wait till then.
Okay. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, I would want to ask you for some clarification. I understand there was a meeting with you and council president, and we received an email stating that you do not want to be asked questions other than pertain directly to the annual budget or deal with pending legislation. Is that just for these meetings, or is that in general?
It wasn't from the mayor. That wasn't from the mayor.
It was a consequence of a meeting between you and I and the chief of police.
Okay.
Mr. President. Mr. Engel. Any way we could get a clarification on that? What it means? If I have a complaint from a citizen, I am not supposed to talk to the code enforcement or police or fire or anybody? Is that what I'm reading? No? Yes? No, it's not. Well, perhaps it could be interpreted that way, but the intention, I don't think, was for that. Okay.
Well, Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
Yes, well, what we got, and of course you know, is I've been asked to advise all members of this common council to refrain from seeking information from the administration on matters that do not pertain directly to the annual budget or deal with pending legislation. And that's what we're asking for clarification on.
They didn't come from the mayor, but I would assume it means it reminds some council members what their role is in regards to the annual budget and ordinances. But if you have any comments, questions, concerns, that's business as usual. There's no change there.
Other comments, questions? Mr. President, I guess it still doesn't make much sense to me, and I guess I would like some clarification if that's possible moving forward. If that's possible.
Yeah.
I'm willing to have conversation moving forward. I think tonight we have business enough to concentrate on, and I'd like to just put this issue aside for tonight. We can revisit it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, Board of Public works. We've got three sets of minutes from them, September 5th, 12th, and 19th. Any questions about that? We have no reports from department heads, but under miscellaneous business, we have a presentation on walkability and walkability.
Good evening. We're going to try to get this connected up here real quick, too, before we jump in.
Aye.
Oh, I'm Elisa Worland, and this is Barry Kramer.
Hello.
Hi there, Barry.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Hello.
Okay, can you all see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so some of you probably know me already as part of my role with Purdue Extension as the community development, health, and human sciences educator. Since I'm coming here to advocate this evening, we're going to take that hat off and put on my private citizen hat. But I'm part of a work group that's been looking at bicycle infrastructure here locally, and we wanted to present a little bit to you all this evening on what we're up to and what we would like to see from council. So the Walkability/Bikeability Work Group was established by a group of local community members and transportation advocates in 2023. I participated in a America Walks Fellowship around that time that helps walk community members through how to increase pedestrian/bicycle infrastructure in communities, and gives a lot of information about how the planning process works, how to work with local government on some of these initiatives, things to be looking for. And as I was going through this, I thought to myself, I don't know who's in this space here locally. Started to reach out. We got a group together of some of these folks back here who were interested in seeing how we could address that in Wayne County. But our goal is to bring a safe, attractive, and connected infrastructure for cyclists and pedestrians to Wayne County. So as I said, we start in 2023. We have made some strides here with, we offered an information session to elected officials, which a lot of folks from county attended, on bicycle infrastructure. Most recently, Purdue's been able to hire someone through the Health First Grant with the county to work on safe routes to schools, which is a program that helps schools develop improved infrastructure and connectivity to bicycle infrastructure so that we can have kids getting to school in an active way. And we've kind of looked at, too, what have been some of the past efforts on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure in the community, and what are some of those things that we would like to work on. One of the major things being there was a master plan for the city of Richmond that came out in 2015 on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, and there's a lot of things from there that haven't been implemented yet. And we'll be talking about that a little bit more tonight. But why should we care about bicycle infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure? There's a number of reasons. So first of all, in Richmond, 10% of households do not own a vehicle. Another 40% of those are one-vehicle households, and that's for a variety of reasons. We have folks who may not be able to afford a car. We have other folks who may be in recovery who can't legally drive a car, or folks with vision problems. We have a lot of seniors here in our community who still need to get to doctor's appointments, spend time with loved ones, go shopping, who may not be able to drive. So that has a lot of implications for how people are moving around our community. And it's not just accessibility as well. This can have a lot of impact on health. So what you see here at the bottom is a map of the Spring Grove area. So this is from the CDC, and it looks at census tracts and different health issues. So in this area of Richmond, about 48% of the population in that area, after being age-adjusted, has high blood pressure. There's some other areas in Richmond that are lower, but we see a lot of high blood pressure, a lot of diabetes, obesity, and a lot of these come from lifestyle. So if we can create a community that is able to enhance more active transportation, then we have more opportunities to have a healthier community. And there's been studies, too, on healthcare costs for folks who engage more in active transportation. They estimate that there's about $500 to $2,500 in healthcare savings if folks just engage in the recommended amount of activity that is recommended in terms of physical activity. It's not just good for health or just connectivity. It's also good for business. So states like Wisconsin found that they got an economic boost from cyclists, about $1.5 billion, with a third of those folks from coming from out of state. And most of this money is spent within small rural communities surrounding the state's extensive trail systems. Also, improving affordable transportation expands the labor pool for industries that require numerous lower-wage employees, such as hospitality and light manufacturing, of which we have a lot in this county. And also, improved walking and bicycling conditions tends to increase local property values, which we've seen in Indianapolis, for example, where they've got some of their bikeways. We've seen a lot of infrastructure go in there. So there's a lot of reasons why this could be useful for our community as well. We're along the Cardinal Greenway, and I know that there's folks from here that will bike a really long distance to go eat a meal somewhere on the other end and then just bike back. And there's people that could be coming this way but may not know what is off the Cardinal Greenway because we have very little wayfinding at present. So there's a number of things that go into bicycle infrastructure. I know from talking to folks in Wayne County, it seems like everyone thinks of just that one bike path that runs down Bain Street. That's kind of seen as a political third rail sometimes. But bicycle infrastructure is so much more than that, and I'm going to run through some of the different options that you might see. So some of those are bike lanes, which I'm sure all of you are familiar with, but that can take on different forms. That could be a bike lane on the street. That could be a protected lane off the street like what we have. It could be having bollards, which are kind of things that block cars from getting into the lane as well. Having bridges or underpasses to avoid interactions with cars. It could also be lighting, having sharrows, which are the shared bike lane markings so that drivers know that bikes are allowed to be in this path, that they aren't supposed to be on the sidewalk, which a lot of people think. Here's some examples of wayfinding from different communities. So there's a few different reasons this is helpful. One, cyclists know where it's actually safe to be biking in a community instead of kind of guessing and running around, especially if you're unfamiliar with a community. But this also gives us prompts. So some of these will mention, like, it's three minutes to the dog park, for example. I might get out of my house and be like, ah, that feels kind of far, and drive there. But if I have signs that say, hey, it's only going to take me five minutes to bike there, I might be more likely to try hopping on my bike and getting there. Also, maps are another way, too. So a lot of communities will have cycle maps available. My understanding is there was in effort years ago to get a City of Richmond bike map printed, which the city never officially approved, but they did get printed to distribute to tourism who loved them. Bike racks are another thing that we need. So there's a number of places here in Richmond where I can bike to, and then I'm like wrangling my bike around a tree because there's no place to park my bike. And bicycle racks don't need to be ugly. They can actually be artwork that can highlight a community. So what if, like, every school here had their own set of bike racks that had their own, like, mascot on there, for example? But there's different types of bike facilities. There are different levels of safety with each of them, too. So this kind of demonstrates, so Class 3, that's the bike sharrows, that's the, like, shared lane that's available. Those are probably the easiest ones to do because you just have some paint on the ground. They are the least safe, though, because you are in the same lanes as cars. There's Class 2, where you can see that there's a bike lane that's next to where the cars are passing. Class 4, those are the ones that actually have bollards or different structures that are kind of keeping traffic separate from each other. And then Class 1 is what we see, kind of the separate pedestrian and cyclist pathways that are away from traffic. So there's different options that we can use, and some of these, like, lower lift things could be beginning with bike sharrows and maybe moving towards something that's maybe safer down the line. There's also traffic slowing measures. So, for example, traffic circles slow down traffic significantly, which can be really good, too, for our neighborhoods. I live out by South Fourth Street, and there's cars that just go flying down that road really fast, and part of that is because the road is wide, and it feels comfortable as a car to go flying down it. But it's not safe if you have a family, you've got kids who might go grab a ball out of the street. There's also bump outs are an option. Even planting trees along the way makes the road feel thinner, which will slow down traffic as well. But why is bicycle infrastructure important? It's going to make our community safer, both for cyclists and for the people who are driving and for pedestrians. There's a lot of folks who are not driving currently in our community. I've heard stories, too, of folks who are, like, in a wheelchair and couldn't get across the street fast enough and got hit by a car. How much money did we put out in Medicaid to, like, cover that person's medical bills after that? They promote a healthier lifestyle, which we definitely need in Indiana. Wayne County's in the bottom quartile for health in Indiana, so we have a lot that we do need to work on. They can foster community. If I'm biking, I'm more likely to see my neighbors. I'm more likely to stop at a business because I can just pop off my bike easily. They're better for the environment. You're not causing emissions. We can have a more thriving community with tourism, for example, like the rain ride, the Ride Across Indiana ride. It ends here. People ride from the other side of Indiana to here. So there's a lot of opportunities that we could have with that, with the Cardinal Greenway, for increased tourism. And then biking also, just like you're getting exercise, that improves mood. Mental health has been a big issue in the community. But I'm going to turn it over to Barry here to talk about making Richmond more bicycle-friendly and a little bit more background on the bicycle master plan.
Our bicycle pedestrian working group wants Richmond and Wayne County, as you've heard, to be a bicycle-friendly community. We want it to be for all abilities of riders, all ages, and for diverse uses, whether as recreation, or whether as transportation to work, or to school, as some of us remember, or for personal errands. City officials began the work 10 years ago to make Richmond more bicycle-friendly by working with Rundell Ernstberger Associates in Indianapolis to develop a bicycle pedestrian master plan. Our current little working group is asking city council on the administration to make a commitment now to implement just the low-hanging fruit in that plan's recommendations. That low-hanging fruit is about 25 miles of on-street facilities, as you just heard described, such as signs, designated bike lanes, and shared lane markings. In other words, painted surfaces that require no huge amounts of money, no major construction, and no long-term traffic disruption. Second slide here. This first slide shows two existing facilities that we already know of and have heard about, the Cardinal Greenway and the Loop. You can see that they are disconnected. The routes that we are presenting this evening would make the Loop and the Cardinal Greenway more connected to residents from different parts of the city. Next slide. As a first priority, we commend this route running from west to east, that is, from left to right, generally along Peacock Road, Richmond Avenue, and Northeast Street. This route would connect the county fairgrounds, the Cardinal Greenway trailhead on North D and Third Streets, and Glenn Miller Park. In the absence of bike facilities on East Main Street beyond downtown, Northeast Street already functions as an alternative for many riders as a route to the Depot District or the Greenway, and it connects to the Loop for access to downtown. It also runs near Star and Dennis Schools. The next slide shows U.S. Bicycle Route 50. It was laid out by the Adventure Cycling Association, a national group that has been working for nearly 40 years to designate a system of designated routes crossing the United States from the Atlantic to the Pacific. The route through Richmond includes streets that our local riders otherwise make use of, as you can see there. Appropriate signage could build local pride in having a transcontinental route pass through here. From east to west, this time from right to left, it enters Ohio on Hodgins Road and South L Street, follows on 13th Street north to Main Street, westward then to Salisbury Road, College Corner Road, then across Indiana and beyond. The next slide shows a route running basically northwest to southeast. It connects the downtown with several neighborhoods in the northwest, along with several neighborhoods and subdivisions in southeast Richmond, out to South 37th Street. Schools along the route include Fairview and Baxter. The next slide shows a north-south corridor on the east side that connects State Road 227 on both the north and the south sides of Richmond while avoiding heavily trafficked U.S. 27. It runs primarily along South 13th Street and North 13th Street. It runs past Vale School and near the campus of Hibbard, the Excel Center, and YMCA. A network that was envisioned in the master plan of 10 years ago. These four routes comprise a significant part of what you see in orange, either orange solid lines or orange dashes. Those are the 25 miles approximately of low-hanging fruit I was speaking about. These were recommended in that master plan to be done within a timeframe, short to medium term, which was five to 10 years. Next year is that 10 years. And we are encouraging council and the administration to implement, get started implementing this. We believe that having these routes would be a big boost in transforming Richmond into a bicycle-friendly city. We believe the Loop and the Cardinal Greenway are good starts at making Richmond bicycle-friendly, but not adequate by themselves. There's other low-hanging fruit, but these four routes that I've described are a good start. So thank you for this time, and we're asking you to make a commitment to provide a real connectivity for Richmond to be a truly bicycle-friendly city.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. President?
Sir.
We have one more little bit here, too. So in addition to the easy lifts, the other thing we would like to invite you all to do, if you're open to it as councils, we would like you to spend an hour with the work group on a tour of local bicycle infrastructure and see the key areas that we would like to see change. Because I think going to physically see these pieces is much different than us, like, showing you a bunch of maps and being able to see where those connection points need to be. So...
I would suggest you appoint a time and invite them.
Okay.
I know all those routes, so...
Okay. Excellent.
You had a question?
I did. So, Mr. Kramer, Ms. Worland, thank you for this time and your presentation. Biking is incredibly important, and I would also recommend, if you haven't already, to work with the Richmond Police Department on safety measures and things like that. There are a lot of distracted drivers out there, so proper lighting and signage is important as well. But I'm encouraged by this. You know, it's also a carbon footprint piece, too, that we're using less gas, too. So thank you for your efforts and time you put into this, and you've still got a year left, so we're good.
Yeah. Are we? Will you commit?
Mr. President.
Yes, Jane.
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you. I enjoy taking the bike rides with the local bike group when I'm able, and it's very delightful. And I do, I mean, I have to say that I, when I've taken my grandson out on the bike rides, I do love the fact that they don't get hit by cars. You know, I feel safer when I am on those trails. I've been to Oregon. They have lovely trails all over the place, and it's wonderful. If I remember correctly, because it happened early, there was, I remember on Peacock Road, and Tony's here, he could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there were some barriers that had to do with electricity and some poles on Peacock Road, and I think that could have been one of the barriers because I think the road may have needed to be a little bit wider or something. So that is something down the road that you will want to also work with our P and L, you know, and with the lighting and everything. That's...
Obviously, a lot of details that need to be...
There are a lot of details, and it's just like the one trail that they made over on the east side of town around 17th Street. It took them years to be able to get that one small portion done, and I wish it could be quicker. But there are so many different pieces that have to be moved. But thank you, and thank you for your enthusiasm with biking. I love it.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Goss.
Are you guys open to alternative routes?
Absolutely. We would just like to have, like, some of our folks at the table as folks are looking at transportation master plans or determining policy related to this because, I mean, there's areas even along the current bike path where, as a cyclist, I'm like, this is clunky. And if someone had actually, like, walked through that with someone, I think some of those pieces could have been avoided. So I think we're open to that, but these are the areas where we know folks are already biking that feel safer, like Peacock, for example. That's what I take to work, if I bike to work, because it's much quieter than going down Main Street, for example.
I've shared an alternative route with several people, and I'll be glad to share them with you.
Okay, perfect. Awesome.
Anyone else? Well, thanks again.
Okay, we'll get in contact about the tour then to see what things work for you all.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance is on first reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Parker.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and read Ordinance 55, Dash 2024 by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read Ordinance 55, 2024 by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number 55, 2024, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from Parks and Recreation and urban residential districts, multiple-family residential district.
Good evening. Beth Fields, Director of Strategic Initiatives. Dustin gives his apologies. He was unable to be here tonight, so I am going to present his memo to you this evening. Ordinance 55, 2024 is a zoning map amendment for the property addressed 1100 North Drive, more commonly known as the former Berryfield Park. We are requesting to rezone the property from Parks and Recreation and high-density, single-family residential to intense, multifamily residential. The rezone would allow the applicant to merge the property with the adjacent Chester Heights Apartments' property and, with the necessary subsequent approvals from the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Advisory Plan Commission, extend the apartment complex onto the former park. This ordinance is respectfully requested to be referred to the Richmond Advisory Plan Commission for public hearing at its meeting on Wednesday, October 23rd.
Any questions for Beth? Hearing done. I will assign it to the Plan Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance is on second reading.
Ordinance number 33, 2024, in appropriation, ordinance to be known as the 2025 budget.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to, and I'll keep this quick, in the EMS line item number 221503011011196, to decrease that line item by $150,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm not going to repeat that.
I've got a recording.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion to, in the FIRE General Fund, 110103621011302 line item, to reduce that by $532,899.83.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to do what he says. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry.
I have a question on that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You want to just totally take it out?
Mr. President?
Mr. President? Am I...
My question is, you want to eliminate it 100%, right?
I would like to, yes, I would.
Okay. You don't want to transfer that to anyplace else? You just want to eliminate it from the budget?
No. No.
It will be reallocated to other departments or wherever it's needed.
How can it be reallocated if we take it out of the budget? I need to know that.
To decrease.
The money will remain there, it's just being deappropriated, it's not decreasing the amount. And so, after January 1 of next year, if there are additional ways which that money can be utilized, then it would need to come before council for an additional appropriation.
We can put it wherever we want?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve this proposal. Should we be voting on this individually?
With an amendment, no, your voice was fine.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would like to make a motion in CCD 440203625054470 to reduce, to decrease by $15,000.
Can you give the title of that?
The title of that is radios and equipment.
Second.
For the fire department.
That's correct.
So, we have a motion and a second for that reduction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion in CCD to decrease line item 440203625054490, other equipment, to a $133,940 decrease.
Second.
From what?
Other, other equipment.
What's the total to begin with?
It's a total reduction.
I believe it's a total reduction.
It's elimination.
So, you eliminated 100%? Is that correct, 100% of other equipment taken out?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We have a motion and second to make that reduction. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Listen, we done?
Um, no. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So, for ordinance number 33-2024, known as the 2025 budget, beyond what was discussed, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin? Hearing done, I will place ordinance 33-2024 on public hearing.
Mr. President? Public hearing's already been held.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
Just slept through that last... We have a motion and a second to engross the ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call the question. Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane, I'm sorry, Jane Bumbalo, Edith Wright?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 34-2024, an appropriation ordinance fixing the annual compensation of all elected city officers for 2025.
It's the pleasure of council.
Mr. President, the Finance Committee also discussed this, 34-2024, and are recommending approval.
May I take that to be a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
On ordinances on the Agenda 12B through K, those all still do need public hearings.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Thank you very much for reminding me. Okay, ordinance 34-2024 is now on public hearing. All those wishing to speak for this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward.
Move for engrossment. Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 34-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 35-2024, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the 2025 salary ordinance.
Mr. President, ordinance 35-2024 was discussed at the Finance Committee, and we are in favor of, or recommending this for approval.
May I have a motion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
This ordinance is now on public hearing. We have too many ordinances in the budget, that's the problem. Anyone wishing to speak for this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross ordinance 35-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call the question. Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 36-2024, an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation and benefits of Richmond police officers.
Ordinance 36-2024 also discussed at the Finance Committee meeting, and we recommend approval of this ordinance.
Ordinance 36-2024 is now on public hearing. Please come forward if you wish to speak for it. Anyone wishing to speak against the ordinance, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 36-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call the question. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance 37-2024, an appropriation ordinance to be known as the sanitary district 2025 salary ordinance.
Mr. President, ordinance 37-2024 was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting and also recommending approval.
Ordinance 37-2024 is now on public hearing. All those wishing to speak for it, come forward, please. Anyone wishing to speak against 37-2024, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 37-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Call the question. Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 38-2024, an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation and benefits of Richmond firefighters.
Mr. President, ordinance 38-2024 was discussed at the Finance Committee meeting and recommend approval on this ordinance.
Ordinance 38-2024 is on public hearing. Those wishing to speak for this ordinance, come forward. Those wishing to speak against this ordinance, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 38-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 49-2024, a special ordinance authorizing the approval of a statement of benefits for a property owner applying for deductions under Indiana Code 6.1-12.1.
Mr. Goss?
Yes, I'm going to speak to 49-2024 and 50-2024.
Okay.
49-2024 is a real property tax abatement request for Richmond Beverage Solutions, and ordinance 50-2024 is for a request for a personal property tax abatement. Richmond Beverage Solutions is a part of Dairy Farmers of America and is located at 1590 Northwest 11th Street in the former Smith Dairy Building. This project includes an expansion of the building to put new equipment in to run additional product lines. You can go to almost any grocery store in Richmond and find one of their products on your shelves. These abatements will help retain 216 jobs and create an additional 65 jobs, with an hourly wage starting at $23 per hour and includes health and wellness benefits. They are making a $6.2 million investment in real property and a $39.6 million investment in equipment. The Tax Abatement Committee met with them last week, went over the requirements and scoring sheet with them. We recommend a nine-year reseeding abatement for real property and a five-year reseeding abatement for personal property.
Very good.
Questions for Doug? Hearing done, I will put ordinance 49-2024 on public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against it, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 49-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor?
Ordinance 50-2024 is now on public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for it, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak against it, please come forward.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross 50-2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
Aye.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhardt?
Aye.
Jerry Purcell?
Aye.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Ada in favor? Ordinance number 54-2024, a special ordinance amending the zoning map for a certain parcel from limited commercial district to multiple family residential district.
Good evening. Beth Fields for Dustin Purves. Ordinance 54-2024 is a zoning map amendment for the property address 1901 Chester Boulevard, requesting to rezone the property from limited commercial to intense family residential. The rezone would allow the applicant to merge the subject property with the adjacent property to the north, which is already zoned M2, with the ultimate goal of building an assisted living facility on the combined lots. Common Council previously referred the request to Richmond's Advisory Plan Commission for public hearing, which was held on Wednesday, September 25th. Notices of the public hearing were sent to 16 nearby property owners. We received four mailed or emailed responses. One was in favor of the petition, the other three were opposed. No one from the public spoke in favor of the petition during the September 25th hearing, while three spoke in opposition. Those opposed to the petition have shared questions and concerns about potential draining issues in the Oak Park neighborhood, the number of trees that would be removed for construction of the facility, and the city's need and capacity for new assisted living options. Planning staff recommended approval of the ordinance, and the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the rezone to Richmond's Common Council. The subject property fronts a stretch of Chester Boulevard that is a predominantly commercial and mixed-use thoroughfare consisting of medical office buildings, gasoline stations, restaurants, churches, and residential properties. High-density, single-family homes and multi-unit residential buildings are established uses in the area surrounding 1901 Chester Boulevard, including the nearby Berryfield and Oak Park neighborhoods and the Chester Heights Apartments. Adjacent properties to the north and south of the property are already zoned M2, and multifamily housing has existed on the adjoining property to the south since 1965. Given these established residential uses and the limited number of properties zoned for multifamily use within the city more broadly, multi-unit housing is an appropriate use of the property moving forward. Common Council also received a letter, which I will read. It is dated 10/7/2024 from Brian Ballinger, 1907 and 1909 Chester Boulevard. Members of council, I am in favor of the proposed zoning for 1901 Chester Boulevard. The proposed development will provide additional living units to Richmond and surrounding community. It is exciting to see the diverse and equitable housing developments that are currently proposed or underway in Richmond. I have required the developer of 1907 Chester Boulevard to maintain the maximum amount of vegetation on the east side of the property. It is important to me that the privacy of the neighbors in Oak Park is safeguarded. It is my understanding that the owners of 1901 Chester Boulevard have the same commitment. Additionally, it is in the developer's best interest to leave as much property untouched as possible. Other development options that have been considered for this property have had the building set on the minimum setback with limited to no vegetation remaining to the property line. This proposed development will offer the greatest amount of privacy to neighboring properties. And we have the petitioner's agent here, George Sowers, to speak to this and answer any questions this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sowers?
My name is George Sowers. My office is 111 South 7th Street, Richmond, Indiana. Beth Fields stole most of my speech, and I know you like to move efficiently. I would like to point out that, as she just said, that changing the zoning from LC to M2 makes it consistent with the properties on the north and most of the properties on the south. I also want to point out that this, what I call downzoning, making it more restrictive than the present zoning, is consistent with our master plan in that the master plan says our primary challenge is a declining and a shrinking population and an aging population, and one of the problems is a lack of diverse housing. This addresses that problem, fits right into the master plan. I would tell you that Jared Burrows, representing the developer, is here with me tonight, as as are the McMahons, Mr. and Mrs. Charles McMahon, who own the property that is nineteen-zero-one. And, um, Jared has a couple photographs of projects that they've done in Jeffersonville, Indiana, and in Columbus, Indiana, if council would like to see them. Uh, I would just like to reserve some time to address any issues raised by anyone speaking in opposition, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. But other than that, uh, if you would like to see pictures of what's been done in Jeffersonville or Columbus, uh, Mr. Burrows?
I'm sure we would.
Okay.
On the, for the benefit of the pu- of the public, I have one question for you.
Okay.
Has Mr. Ballinger deeded restricted the property such that it's mandated that the, uh, vegetative berry remains?
I have not seen a deed. Um... So I-
By, by, by his letter, it implies that he's...
I can't, I cannot answer that question. I don't, maybe Mr. Burrows does, but I, I haven't, there's, there's been no title commitment so far because we haven't closed. I don't know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I remember, if you don't mind my speak, um, I remember the ordinance that came forward when Mr. Ballinger, um, had purchased the land, um, and the zoning was changed. And I remember that it was, it may not have been, I don't know that answer if it has or has not been written, but I do know that there was verbal, um, a verbal commitment to leave so many feet away from any of the adjoining properties. And I did see that in an email that he sent also, that there was something, but...
Well, this issue did come up at Plan Commission, and I, uh, discussed it with the developer. The original tentative site plan showed a forty-foot setback, and they intended to leave as many trees as possible. Since then, we've looked at the zoning ordinance, and the amount of parking spaces is much more limited for assisted living. One space for each five residents plus the total number of spaces for the largest staff at one time. And so we've looked at this proposed site plan, and we can reduce that a great deal. In fact, talking to Mr. Burrows, th- this is in discussion. We believe we can have a ninety-foot setback in the rear along Oak Park, which would leave a great many of the trees.
Right.
So that's, that's something that we believe we, and I've ta- I've talked to Justin Purvis regarding this. He sees no problem. He thought maybe we could even reduce more parking spaces, but I don't know about moving the, the, the location of the building to do that. But we do believe we can actually have a ni- ninety-foot, uh, setback.
Right.
And we'd be happy to leave as many trees as we can. We don't have the expense of taking them down.
Right.
Any other question for Mr. Sauer?
Mr. President, um, not a question for Mr. Sauer, but I was, um, wanting to request permission. Um, we also received a letter here from Amanda Markey, the Executive Director of the Leland Legacy, and, um, Mr. Ballinger's letter was read by Beth, and, and I was requesting that maybe Beth would consider reading this letter as well? If that's permissible.
She's here to speak to me.
Amanda, go for it.
But I, I was just, out of fair, out of fairness with Beth, read Ballinger, but it's...
Well, when we get, get the full publicly hearing, public hearing, we'll be calling for people who wish to speak for and against.
So if you have another questions, uh, Jared does have some pictures on a thumb drive we'd be happy to show you, because they've done similar projects in Jeffersonville and Columbus, Indiana.
I'm sure folks would like to see it.
Yeah, I do have one question. So if, when people speak in opposition, if there is a question that's directly can be answered by Mr. Sowers, can he come back up and answer a question?
Is there any requested?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We're good.
So with, at this point, I'd like to introduce Jared Burrows, and he can, uh, show you what they have done in Jeffersonville and Columbus.
Thank you, George. Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, city staff, residents of Richmond. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Um, I know it's late in the evening, so, um, let's, let's take a moment, and I'd like to, um, show you examples of, um, prior developments that we've completed in the state of Indiana. First slide there has just a couple excerpts from, um, the Richmond Rising Plan. As George touched on, the number-one challenge in the Ri- Richmond Rising Plan was determined to be, um, Richmond's aging population and, and lack of, um, adequate and, uh, diverse housing options. Go ahead. Uh, this is Vivera, Jeffersonville, Indiana. It's a hundred-plus unit assisted living facility. Just want to take a moment and show the exterior finishes. Lots of windows, neutral tones. Very fantastic-looking building, in my opinion. Here's, um, an inter- interior shot of the dining area, as well as some outdoor patio space. Again, common areas, library area, uh, plenty of room to gather, um, and for staff to engage in activities with our residents. Um, here's another assisted living facility over in Columbus, Indiana. Same concept, um, around a hundred-and-twenty units of, of assisted living. Four stories, again, um, neutral tones on the outside, lots of windows for our residents. Interior di- dining, um, exterior patio area. Um, here's a shot of our onsite beauty and barber shop, very popular with our residents, as well as the, um, the facility's transportation mode. We, we have a mode of transportation for our residents at all of our facilities. And then, just a note on, on parking, it's ma- the vast majority of our residents do not have vehicles. Uh, our initial site plan did have a surplus number of parking spots compared to, uh, what's required by Richmond Code. So we are exploring options to re- drastically reduce parking, which will allow us to shift the building away from neighboring neighborhoods, buildings, create the additional buffer, um, as Mr. Sowers touched on. Um, this is just a very high-level timeline of the development. We are now in... Uh, basically Q-four, twenty-twenty-four. Next stage would be design with our architect and engineers. We would look to close with financial partners in twenty-five, and, um, we would look to complete construction in fall of twenty-twenty-six. Open up to questions.
Any questions from council? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. You do that to me every night.
I know.
Uh, Mr. Burrows, uh, how many, uh, units are you proposing here?
One-hundred-and-eighteen, all in one single building.
One single building?
Yes.
That was my other question. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, now we're going to, uh, put this on public hearing. And are there others who wish to speak for this ordinance? Are there folks here who wish to speak against this ordinance? Come forward, and we would like you to, uh, limit your remarks to five minutes in the, uh, in respect of the time tonight, in the long meeting we've already had.
I promise I'll make it short and sweet.
Thank you.
And I'm not a, uh, electronic kind of girl, so your packets are actually, um, paper. So I do it the good old-fashioned way.
Thank you.
So, um, my name's Amanda Markey. I'm the Executive Director of the Leland Leg- Legacy, which is a licensed assisted living facility. I have been with the Leland for over sixteen years and will always be a champion for growing Richmond. I know that city council and the mayor have a daunting task of trying to make everyone happy in our community, and I promise you that's not going to happen, but we'll make, uh, we'll put our best foot forward to try to do so. So, uh, to help with this decision, I would like to share some information and concerns from my perspective, being a licensed healthcare administrator. The Leland has been deficiency-free by this Indiana State Department of Health for seven years with our surveys. Uh, surveys is, it's just basically a fancy term for inspections, which happen frequently through the year for various reasons, and those are, and those inspections are unannounced. So at any given point, you can have a survey team from the Department of Health show up in your facility, could be at two o'clock in the morning, could be at two o'clock in the afternoon. So, um, perfect surveys don't come easy, and it's not easy to do twice in a row, let alone for seven years and through a global pandemic, which I'm pleased to say that the Leland accomplished. The Leland has been licensed for a hundred-and-nine residents for approximately thirteen years. We have over a two-point-two-million-dollar annual payroll, seventy employees, and we do use all local vendors for work done to our building, with the exception to our food services, which that does come out of Cincinnati. We pay approximately a hundred thousand dollars in property taxes, uh, which just a few years ago, we paid half that amount annually. So, um, that's been a huge hit for our, our bottom line. The concerns I have regarding this, uh, project, uh, this forty-four-million-dollar structure is comparable to the size of the Leland and how many clients it can house and the amount of employees it will employ. How much of a tax credit or financial incentive would this organization get from the city to bring them to town? There are currently ten senior living communities in Wayne County. Six of those are, six of those ten properties are assisted living or have a part of their building that are assisted living units, and the other part is a nursing home. This already is an oversaturation in our community for healthcare facilities, which puts us all at risk. This would be adding one more. There is also another assisted living building being researched by the Housing Authority for the Old Nicholson School that has not made its way before city council. I'm not really familiar with the details of that, and maybe the mayor could, um, shed some light on that. The state of Indiana is pulling back the Medicaid waiver program, which is known as Pathways as of this past July. The outcome will be determined in the next several years how this program will shake out with the new administration. A program called Home Community-Based Services is a huge emphasis in Indiana right now, which will bring healthcare to residents' homes to avoid assisted living or nursing homes altogether. The Leland currently has fifteen vacant rooms at the Leland. We have not had a census this low, even through the pandemic, and those changes have been due to, uh, the payer sources on the state, um, state level. Dr. Barrett has been working with us tremendously, um, but there is a huge concern as far as, um, Medicaid waiver options. At the planning board meeting a week ago, uh, the developers had stated that they were full. However, in a quick look this afternoon on the Department of Health website, as of July first, their census was a hundred-and-nine out of a hundred-and-fifty-four rooms in the Columbus, Indiana property, uh, that the gentleman just shared. And that is in a larger-sized community than Richmond. I think that Columbus has over fifty thousand as par- as far as population. Uh, Richmond has, um, over thirty thousand, thirty-four thousand, if I remember correctly. The developer has stated this will not add any more traffic to Chester Boulevard. The Leland has numerous semis for food delivery, medical equipment deliveries, physical therapists, emergency vehicles, families, employees, and some of our residents who drive, which this would significant, significantly impact Chester Boulevard. Lastly, there is a nationwide nursing shortage. This new assisted living building would definitely impact that shortage locally to the existing nursing senior communities, as well as Reed Hospital. To close, I ask that the city council take my statement into consideration. Is competition good? Absolutely. But putting financial hardship or even causing other businesses to fail is not. So included in your packet, I printed off, it was straight from the Department of Health. Um, there was a survey, annual survey for their just Jeffersonville property. Um, like I said, that came directly from the Department of Health. Uh, just some information, um, the Department of Health has every property, including all of the senior communities that are in Wayne County. You can look at somebody, if you're looking, you know, up in Carmel for a family, uh, you can look up that and look at any history as far as the surveys. So, um, this is a survey from their just Jeffersonville, um, property. Then also, the, um, Columbus property. You can also look and see what their vacancy was. And so this is directly, again, from, um, the Department of Health. This isn't anything that I fabricated, but a hundred-and-fifty-four is, um, showing that their, their beds, or that's their, uh, capacity. And as of July first, they were at a hundred-and-nine. And, um, I also did put together just a real quick list of all the communities, um, in Wayne County for your benefit, too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak against the project?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question for Mayor Ola regarding... She mentioned the, um, project at Nicholson School, which is in my district. What happened with that?
The housing project you're referring to, at the former Nicholson School site, was a favored project of the late Mayor Sally Hutton. She started that twenty years ago, thereabouts, and it never came to fruition. And from what I understand, the IHCD has put it on hold again. So will that come around next year? I don't know. But one thing we do know from the housing study is that in our area, there's fifty-five-hundred underhoused seniors that are living in substandard housing that need better options.
Correct.
So it seems to me like there's room for everyone to grow.
Yeah, I mentioned that.
As far as financing, how they pay for their rents and the problems with Indiana's Medicare right now, that's a different story that I can't fix and you can't fix, but someday it will be fixed.
Let me, uh, officially close the public hearing, with the exception of any time you might ask for, Mr. Sowers.
I would just say that, um, Marion doesn't plan these projects without doing marketing studies beforehand. I'd, I'm not, uh, greatly familiar with those studies, but I would welcome Jared to speak to you about the marketing studies. Uh, although I'm not sure how relevant the marketing studies are to zoning issues. The fact is, we'd like to rezone this from an L-C, which would permit things as far as filling station, sexually-oriented retail, fire stations, down to mul- M-two, which is multifamily, and it's limited to multifamily. And within the multifamily zone district, the assisted living has far less automobile and traffic than anything else, and we think it's a good project. But as far as marketing, Mr. Burrows could tell you what their marketing study shows. I don't think they intend to engage in this if they don't think it's going to work.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Goss?
Is this organization a nonprofit or a for-profit organization?
For-profit.
Okay. And how many employees?
I know the maximum at one time would be twenty-five on one shift, because that was taken into account for studying the parking. As far as total staff, uh, Mr. Burrows?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Okay.
Any other questions? Does anyone want, want to hear marketing study? We have it? No? I think we're good.
Thank you.
Well, we had a unanimous vote, uh, in favor of this Plan, uh, Plan Commission, and you've heard the Plan Commission report, so I'm open to whatever council is ready to do here.
Mr. President, if I may make a comment. These are times that I feel very inept, in the sense that I don't know how this new facility will affect the current facilities and the employees of those. But we have to remember that this is a zoning change, and we were reminded by, um, our corporate attorney, Sickman, that there's limited things we can consider in this vote.
Correct.
And, um, as I understand it, this does need, meet the master plan, or I would say comprehensive plan, as it's been expressed by Mrs. Fields. So, um, that's really all I have to say. I just wish I knew more about how this would affect other facilities.
Well, that's really not our purview.
No, not, you're right.
And every study that we've had done, and the marketing studies they've have done, demonstrate the need for this product in our market.
Thank you for the time.
Floor is open for a motion.
Move for engrossment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to engross this ordinance, which is number fifty, twenty-two-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Call the question.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Doug Goss?
Aye.
Lucinda Wright?
No.
Bill Engel?
Aye.
Larry Parker?
Aye.
Jane Bumbalo?
Aye.
Justin Burkhart?
No.
Jerry Purcell?
No.
And Gary Turner?
Aye.
Three, six, five, three.
No.
Were there two down here that you voted no? I had Justin and Jerry.
Yeah, and Lucinda. So it's, it's, uh...
Yeah.
Five, three. Yeah, motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no unfinished business tonight, thank goodness, uh, so I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And remain seated, because you have so-